Okay, this meeting of the Reading Municipal Light Department Board of Commissioners is being held remotely on Zoom and streamed live on the RCTV and YouTube. The RMLD Board of Commissioners recognize the importance of hearing public comment at the discretion of the Chair on items of the official agenda. We ask that all questions or comments from the public be directed to the Chair, that all parties, including members of the RMLD Board, act in a professional and courteous manner when addressing the Board or responding to comments. Once recognized by the Chair, all persons addressing the Board shall state their name and address prior to speaking. It is the role of the Chair to maintain order in all public comment or ensuring discussion. Commissioner Pacino will be the Board Secretary.
Very good.
All right, and I believe we have John Rogers from the public and Karen Herrick. Hello. Alrighty. Public comment, I'm going to defer to ladies first, if that's okay, John? Okay, Karen, if you'd like to go?
Sure, thank you, and then I might not stay all the way to the... Thank you for having me, I appreciate it. So, I've just wanted to come tonight, it's been a while since I've visited. I am continuing as your liaison to the Select Board this year, very happy and excited to do that. So, I wanted to start by saying that I got an electric vehicle earlier this month, and I was blown away by how seamless the process was in getting an email from RMLD saying, "Hey, we know what you're up to, and you might want to apply for this rebate", and it's very easy, and that was wonderful, and I needed that list of instructions to save me a call. So, that was all good, and now I'm not allowed to do laundry between 12 and 7, thank you very much. It's all good, and, you know, thank Colleen's been keeping us posted about the EV charger grant. That is like, that's just amazing, and we're so looking forward to those being installed, and hopefully very soon. And also, the other thing that happened earlier, I think it was July, right after the 4th, is that the RMLD and representatives from Reading did testify at the hearing by the Telecommunications Committee. So, you know, thank you, Colleen, for coming forward and coming up with proposals to, you know, facilitate RMLD communities joining green communities and testifying live. We were fortunate, the hearing was only two hours. So, myself, David Zeke from the Climate Advisory Committee were able to testify live. A number of other communities did, asking them to amend the regulations, and select member Mark Doxer also sent in written comments, so we did our part. And then, I wanted to let you know that we had an update with town staff, David Zeke and I did with town manager and planning staff and assistant town manager. So, we wanted, we've been working really hard at our Green Communities application, and they recently changed the regulations. There's no longer a once-per-year joining opportunity, it is now a rolling basis. So, anyway, I just wanted to give you guys kind of the first heads up that where we're standing, we, Reading should be ready to submit an application in October, which was kind of the old, old time that you would submit an application. Anyway, we have some public sessions we want to do, but we have approved the EV policy, and so has the School Board, School Committee, and we have also, we also previously adopted the stretch code, town meeting overwhelmingly needed that. So, I just wanted to give you that heads up, and we want to work with you. So, we wanted to, just to keep you all updated, your support. And we also had kind of the very beginnings of a conversation about, should Reading be thinking about getting a Sustainability Director? Which, of course, you know, RMLD would be a big part of, is a big part of our sustainability goals in meeting the objectives of the Climate Bill. So, that's up, that's what we've been working on in our end, and I appreciate that my power hasn't gone out at all during these storms, thank you very much.
All right. Okay, well, thank you very much, Karen, that was very kind words.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question back to Ms. Eric or?
Yes, absolutely.
Just a couple of quick things, what is it, first just, what is it that you need from, from us, or what would be needed from us to make that application go smoothly? And also, I'm just curious, as we go through some really record heatwaves in other, especially in other parts of the country, like record-breaking, incredible, super heatwaves, as we go into them here, you know, we have a great peak shredding program at RMLD, it's gotten a lot better over the years, and it's a real credit to the department. And I'm wondering what the town itself, what policy or procedure the town government itself has for reacting to when those warnings come in, especially the, the annual ones, you know, in the summer? You know, is there, is there a procedure in the town for the town to reduce its own consumption? That's just something, do you know anything about that?
You know, that's an excellent question, I actually am not aware of a policy addressing that, but I would be happy to ask that question. I'm not even sure which, you know, which department head would kind of work on that, but I'm happy to do that.
Great, thanks. All to the good, you know, it helps us on our costs, and it helps on emissions, and it's a great program we have.
Right, and then your other question, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I don't believe that we need RMLD for any input for the application. If and when Reading is approved, and Colleen knows all about this, we would need some help getting up and going, and namely, I believe, limited to collecting about 50 cents per account and forwarding that to the Renewable Trust, which supports the Green Communities Program. So, and all the more reason to keep everybody in the loop so we can figure out how to do that.
Okay, thank you, are there any more questions?
If I hear anything else, I will let you know, nothing else came up at our meeting last week.
Okay, at this point, if I could invite John to speak?
Sure, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. John Rogers, 39 Tower Hill Road, North Reading. And here also on behalf of Grace, the Greater Reading Alliance for Cleaning Energy. And basically, just, this is going to get boring, but just wanted to compliment you again, as I think I did in the last meeting I attended. I'm looking forward to Greg's presentation of the Renewable Choice Program, and he's got three adjectives on his slide, I won't, I don't want to steal your thunder, Greg, but I think you hit it, you nailed it, and I think that's, that's terrific, keeping it, keeping it simple. And I think, I think it really does that. I'm less, I'm less sure about the non-carbon choice, I don't, I'm not sure that adds a whole lot of value, and I think it's going to add complexity for you all, but the renewable choice, the way you've spelled it out. And I look forward to that discussion later tonight. My one recommendation is, specifying Class 1 was terrific, Class 1 Renewable Energy Credits. I think that's really important. May want to define it even more simply for folks and say some subset of that, because we know some is more controversial than others. So, you know, maybe it's solar and wind, or solar, wind, and low-impact hydro, because I know you have good connections with hydro developers, or hydro, not developers, but old stuff, but, but potentially stuff that, that has a Class 1 component to it. So, just a suggestion that even simpler, even more motivating might further the goals even more. But again, great job on that, and thank you.
Well, thank you, John. All right, if we could please move, move to item number two, report on the Citizens Advisory Board meeting.
Yes, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Phil?
I attended virtually the Citizens Advisory Board. First, I want to make a comment kind of under public comment. If anybody doesn't believe that there's climate change going on, Dave mentioned that the temperatures out in the West, and also the floods in Europe. You know, I suggest people go look at that and see the effect climate change has had. So, that's just a general comment I want to make here tonight. So, and with that, I'll go to the Citizens Advisory Board. I attended the meeting earlier tonight. You're going to see all the same presentations again, so I don't want to steal anybody's thunder, you know, at this point, so I will leave it to both Colleen and to Greg to make their presentations. And that, because that's basically what was presented to the CAB tonight.
Okay. All right, moving on to the next item, which would be approval of the Board Minutes, Attachment 1, Suggestion Most, Suggested Motion. Phil, if you could?
Yeah, I can make the motion. Move that the Board of Commissioners approve the meeting minutes of February 24, 2021, meeting on the recommendation of the General Manager.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Mr. Pacino, aye.
Mr. Stenbeck, aye.
Talbot, aye.
Mr. Colter, aye.
Bita, I'll abstain.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Therefore, 4 to 0, it's approved?
4:01.
All right.
4:01.
4:01, thank you, Phil. Okay, the next item on the agenda, item 5, the General Managers Report, Attachment Number 2. Colleen, if you could, please?
Yeah, can I make a suggestion, though? If, if, if Karen is only here, I don't know how long she's going to stay, I would, I think it might be beneficial if Greg went first, and I can do some updates afterwards, and Policy 19 afterwards, I think this is really important. Phil, what do you, I mean, that would be my recommendation, I'll do whatever you want.
Sure, I think that's a great recommendation.
Yeah.
All those, I don't think you have to vote, is any, anybody, any concerns with that? Oh, I see, okay, all right, sure, if that's a great suggestion, why don't we go ahead with that, if you're ready?
Thank you.
Perfect, so Erica, if you could do the IRD slides, get them ready. While she gets those ready, I'll move through it pretty quickly. There's four key topics. One is just load snapshot, there'll be two key points that I'll bring forward on the load snapshot. It sets the stage for the rest of the discussion. Quick discussion on power supply, which we'll do on a regular basis. The quarterly report on the certificates, I'll report on that quickly, and then we'll spend a little bit more time talking about rates and choices and cost of service. That last piece is to set the stage for a follow-up meeting, or for the next meeting, which would be hopefully in August. And also, I think for tonight, the key thing we're looking forward is some feedback from, from you guys on choices. I think John Rogers got us started on that, and we can talk a little more about that, next slide. So, so this, and the load, two key things, I want to, two key takeaways. One is just a reminder of the three primary rate classes. The fourth rate class is basically school, municipality, buildings, etc. It's that small little circle in the middle there, I'm going to come back to this chart in just a second. But the three primary rate classes are residential, which is the largest piece, about 40% of the total load mission at KWH. And then there's industrial and commercial, which are almost equal, not quite. Obviously, you can see from the data, industrial's a little bit bigger. Some of the key things I'll show you on this, this chart in just a moment, is that the residential, besides being the largest, it's also got the broadest geography, obviously, by definition. The other two thing is it's the most seasonally dynamic, and it's also the most hourly dynamic. We'll see the seasonality here on this chart to the right. Hourly would be something I could do at a later date, but basically, it's a little bit more dynamic than the CNI space. That chart to the right is basically a line graph, a line chart in a circle. It's known as a spider chart, and, or think of it as a clock, basically. January being on the top in the 12 o'clock position, and then July being in the 6 o'clock position. So, it's basically each month, and then those lines are basically the load from those respective classes during each month. And so, there's a lot of interest, we could dive, spend a lot of time digging through this, but the key thing I want you to notice is the relative consistency of the, of the greens and orange-yellow ones, which are the CNI space, the yellowish-orange just being the commercial, and the greenish ones being the industrial. You can see on a seasonal basis, they stay pretty constant, which is going to be important when we talk about rate discussion later on tonight, and also in more detail next time. You'll notice that the blues, which are the residential, there's a bit more seasonality, as I just mentioned a few moments ago, in the wintertime, January, February, and also in August. So, that's the one key takeaway, is just that characterization of those three rate classes, and that's going to be important for us to remember. We'll come back to this data next month, just as a quick refresher in background. The other key takeaway from this slide is the growth. And you can see from this slide, the different colors, so there's 2019, 2020, 2021 for each one of these. And a key takeaway from each one of these is that for each class, the load is starting to grow. That's in contrast to the past decade, where the load in aggregate was declining at a rate of about 1% per year. So, over the past 10 years, each year down a percent. We basically come to the bottom of that curve, and the reason we've come to the bottom of that curve, probably the biggest change is that the efficiency gains have slowed down. An example would be the LED light replacement program. That, most of that replacements happen, not all of it, but a good chunk of it. And lighting used to be nearly 30% of a typical building's load, and now it's less than 10%. So, that's an example of where efficiency gains are slowing. There's just the beginning of electrification, and then there's a little bit of business growth that we anticipate. We're seeing a little bit of it here in this data the past three years, but those three things are changing the load. So, the second key takeaway is that we're starting a period of load growth. Right now, we're trying to conservatively estimate it to be just a little bit less than 1% per year annually. Eight tenths is our estimate right now, we will continue to refine that each year. The reason why this is important from a context perspective, because it sets the stage for our discussing on rates, which we'll talk about at the end. But load growth is a good thing for all rate payers, and that it basically, there's, you're going to see upward pressure on rates for a whole bunch of reasons, we'll talk about in a few minutes. But load growth basically allows that upward pressure to be dampened a little bit, so it's not going to be quite as pressured up with load growth, that's a good thing. The second thing, and John's here representing the need from the ENO group, but as load starts to grow, we're going to transition to a period of equipment build-out from the network perspective, not just maintenance. So, that's another change that we're anticipating over the next five to 10 years as well. So, key points, just the characterization of those three classes is important, and the fact we've gone from a decline to a growing, slightly growing load growth. Next slide, please. This is, this is important from the supply side. If you guys remember, I didn't bring it into this presentation, I want to keep it short and sweet. But if you remember our multi-year slide, we see the stacked bar chart, as we go to the upper right-hand corner, we've got to fill in, each year, we've got to basically continue to purchase power to fill in contracts that are expiring. And so, we're doing that now, not only in a, just purely expiring contracts, but now we have to start accommodating growth. So, what we have done so far this year, we've executed three TFA contracts, and what always comes up, what does TFA stand for? It's Transaction Facility Agreement. Basically, what it is, it's an analysis that we run regularly a couple times a month. And we basically look at both price, there's an algorithm tied to this, we look at both future prices and also volumes. So, we basically look to fill in parts of our portfolio. So, we've done three different contracts, January, March, and May. We're running the analysis to look at another one, prices are actually going up, which is important context for later on. Our portfolio for 2021 is pretty full right now, we have a little bit of variability, which is good. But basically, we ended up buying in the TFA program about 19%, and we look at, we go out basically four years when we do these. So, I'll report on these on a quarterly basis, and that's a good, a good mechanism to help balance and take, take advantage of pricing opportunities as we need them. The second group there in the middle are the three, just a quick update on the three hydro projects that we presented earlier this spring. There was two in New York, with the first one being Tahoe, Doho, I'm sorry. And the, the second one was also in upstate New York. The third one is probably going to get signed in November of 2021. That's actually the very first one you guys approved and voted on, that's the one in Connecticut. They're in the process of transferring the license and doing the acquisition on that one. We're on the verge of signing the Doho one. Last, back in early June, we reported that we had finished the due diligence, the environmental and social justice due diligence, so that report we completed. So, we're in the process of finalizing the contract for the Doho one, and then we'll do the second hydro, which is the upstate New York one. We'll start the, well, we've actually already started the due diligence process on that one as well, and trying to finalize that contract. So, those are in process, thank you for approving those earlier. For the reasons that we talked about before in terms of load growth, I'll walk a little bit more in context here in just a minute. But I should mention it right now, one of the things to keep in mind in terms of load growth and Climate Bill is that the Climate Bill has basically, through the electrification requirements, it will in effect increase load for everybody in New England. Right now, Massachusetts is the most aggressive, but Massachusetts is a significant portion of the regional growth. And at the same time, the Climate Bill is removing from the supply portfolio fossil-fuel-based supplies as well, which includes natural gas. And so, what, we're in a situation, as we look forward, and all of us, whether it's an IOU, a small MLP, or a large MLP, we're all looking at the scenario where demand is increasing, and the known supply is decreasing. So, there's increasing competition, everybody's looking for supply. In addition, looking for non-carbon supply. So, the fact that we're pushing aggressively on these non-carbon and the hydro ones is very important. So, thank you guys for your support. On that last block, we are continuing to search, we're actively looking for utilities-scale solar opportunities. We're actually, in the rate discussion, we will make some proposals in terms of updating the residential solar incentives within our network. We view both those as being very important. As offshore wind starts to materialize, you've seen a lot of news, but they need to get to a point where we can actually enter contracts. We'll do that in combination with a group of other MLPs to, to, likely through ENE, unless we can do some stuff on our own, but we'll do that, that's in the works as well, so as much offshore wind as we can get our hands on. The other thing that we continue to look at, you guys are all aware that we have a storage project, we have a battery project in place right now, it is financially beneficial to us. It is part of our peak management program that Commissioner Talbot mentioned earlier. So, we are looking actively in terms of where we can add storage, realize that storage is not a generator, even though it's in power supply. The reason why I put it in this block here is it allows us to shift. So, for example, when we get solar adding to supply in the afternoon, we will maybe shift it to the evening. So, storage is a key piece, and we're looking for opportunities there, well, to expand on what we've already got in place. Those are the three key things, think about power supply. Moving fairly quickly, because I want to make sure we have time, we got a lot on the agenda. Next slide, please. The commitment that we made from Policy 30, that we, Revision 1, that we put in place earlier this year, is that on a quarterly basis, that we would report in terms of what we're doing with our certificates. We had laid a policy in place in terms of what we would be doing, this is our quarterly snapshot. So, these certificates are from Q1 of 2021, so the first three months of this year. As you remember, there's roughly a six-month delay in terms of them getting minted. These certificates were minted last week, July 15. So, we are in the process of transacting those. So, if you look at the waterfall slide here on the left, our opening balance, because it starts at the beginning of the year, we had sold everything last year as part of the old policy. So, we started with an opening balance of zero, each quarter that'll now have some numbers in it. We acquired roughly 60,000 certificates. That represents approximately 43% of our portfolio, in terms of our total power purchase portfolio, which we actually purchased during that first quarter. As you remember, our, our self-imposed part of the Policy 30 Rev. 1, we, as a, as an RMLD, as an organization, under your guidance, but the new policy basically calls for us each year, doing an annual increase in terms of the amount of certificates that we retire. So, in 2020, the target, the Climate Bill requirement was 20%, and in 2030, the requirement is 50%. So, that basically means each year we'll increase the number of certificates, the level of certificates that we require each year by 3%. In this particular period, we're going to retire all the effects plus a few of the other categories. The others basically are either non-effect or non-mass-class 1s. And in that, so that we retire that group to get to that 23%. So, we always, each quarter, try and be at our 23% target for this year. Obviously, next year it'll be 26%, and the year after, 3% on top of that. In terms of the balance, the policy instructs us to basically sell the balance, and what the policy, or what the operating procedure that we're working on right now is of that 23%, we're going to sell as soon as we can, approximately 80% of those certificates, 80% of that above the 20%, I mean, above the 23%. So, that balance there, between 23 and 43, we're going to sell roughly 80% of that, or roughly about 16% of the portfolio. That's going to net a little bit over 400,000, likely a little bit over $400,000 for this quarter that we'll apply, and we're going to do this to, to this quarter, this calendar quarter, and we'll continue to do that each quarter, so that we have basically stable retirement coming in, and we don't leave that till the very end in one big bucket. The balance, that 20% balance, we're going to basically leave in our NEPUL GIS account. And we can obviously transact those, either retire or sell at any point in time. We're just doing that because, if you remember, we have season, seasonality in our load, and we're trying to make sure that on a quarterly basis, on a seasonal basis, we get the 23%. So, that's, that's a quick snapshot of where we are in certificates. We'll continue to report on this on a regular basis, probably a format pretty similar to this, combination of a waterfall chart and an idea of the order of magnitude. Next slide, please. So, this sets the stage for cost of service. I know I'm moving quickly, there's a lot of material here, but we're trying to, trying to set the stage here for a deeper discussion. And in two slides, I'm going to ask, is where we're going to want your opinion on the renewable choice and the non-carbon choice, but this kind of sets the stage. If you remember from the June presentation, early June presentation, we did an illustration of 2025 expenses, and we looked at it between operating cost, energy capacity, transmission, and certificates, so kind of where we're going. And the important element is to notice the relative importance of capacity and transmission, the things that we're doing to manage those, and Commissioner Talbot mentioned our peak management program. That's one of the things we do to keep those costs down. There's a lot of details in terms of how we do that. Obviously, on the energy piece, that's the 30%, it goes into how we contract, what we contract, and the length of our contracts, etc. As I mentioned before, there is upward pressure on demand or load due to electrification primarily, which is all part of the Climate Bill, specifically the drive of transportation, electrification of transportation, as well as electrification of buildings. So, all that's driving it up, as I mentioned earlier, the typical supplies are being phased out from a Climate Bill perspective. So, we continue to look for opportunities in power supply, which is why there's upward pressure on that energy piece. But in terms of the, the rates, and what you're going to see in more detail, we wanted us to walk through those, those key goals. There's the umbrella of making sure that they're understandable, these are rates we're talking about now, they're fair, and they're motivating, and they're motivating for people to think about changing their behavior in terms of how they use energy. The goal is just the five key things that we're always looking at, and this will be important context for our discussion next time. Obviously, we need to design the rate so they cover the cost of providing service, both the energy piece, the energy transmission capacity certificates, the power piece, as well as the operating cost. It's important that we allocate those costs fairly across the rate base. We need to provide funds for efficiency and electrification. Our goal is to provide more data and more options to allow customers to modify their behavior, to be motivated to do things differently. Again, in terms of looking at their total load and their total use, and then obviously their total cost. And obviously, you know, we've always been required to comply with the DPU requirements, but also now Climate Bill requirements, and we talked about those before. So, those are some of the things that we need to make sure we accommodate from a goal perspective. There's a lot of key inputs, but in the five key inputs that we look at, and you're going to just to set the stage, you know, the actual expenses and the forecasted expenses. At the same time, the planned capital cost, again, distinguishing between expenses and capital cost. Looking at the coincident demand relative to energy capacity and transmission in particular, and I'll talk more about that in just a moment. And then, of course, we've got special provisions, and also what the profile in particular looks like by the individual rate class, and we talked a little bit about that in the very first slide. There's a seasonality play, and there's also a daily play. And one of the things that we'll show you next time is that commercial and industrial in particular tend to be fairly, industrial in particular tends to be fairly flat over a 24-hour period, with businesses typically running three shifts, whereas residential has a pretty steep curve. And so, we need to accommodate that when we think about our rates as well. Next slide, please. One of the things that's happening that is going to impact how we think about fairly allocating costs across the rate classes is basically when the peak is shifting. And then this left-hand column, this is just an example, an illustration to give you an idea of what's, of what's happening. This is a 2020-17 example, it was a simple slide that came from ISO New England. So, this is in our rate base, this is on a regional basis. But that, this is basically a 24-hour curve, all right? And for the springtime, which is a shoulder month, that curve, you can see that gray line, basically, it's peaking, you know, around lunchtime. But it... But it. In that, in that curve, that baseline curve, it's on a cloudy day. So there's no impact of solar. Two days later, it's a sunny day and solar and this is twenty seventeen. Now there's a lot more solar installed now than it was then. But basically, the key point is that that dip at one to two o'clock in the afternoon. Is the result of solar picking up a significant part of the load, that load, let's assume that that gray line is still there. But when you add solar into it, it basically reduces the net load in the middle of the afternoon. In effect, it's basically pushing the peaks to a different hour of the day. In this particular case, we've got two peaks, one in the morning, one in the afternoon. But in the summertime, it's generally just one peak late in the afternoon. That centered column there, that blue ISO New England capacity, just to give some data behind it. That middle column is the hour ending, so our ending fifteen hundred twenty, two thousand eight, nine, ten. And as you get to twenty, you know, nineteen, twenty, twenty at the bottom of that curve, that's our ending eighteen hundred, which is six o'clock. Versus our ending fifteen hundred at the top, which is about a decade ago. Our, it was basically middle of the afternoon. So part of that change is driven by increased solar, which is not so much pushing the load down. Well, it's, it's basically taking part of the load in the middle of the afternoon, which in effect, what used to be a lower part of the curve is now a peak. That's going to become important when we think about capacity and transmission in particular. Because capacity and transmission, remember, represent about forty percent of the cost. So we're going to, we're going to think, remember in the context of fairly allocating cost. This is one of the factors that we're going to put into play. So we'll talk about it a little bit next time. But I wanted to give you guys an idea. When we talk about the peak shift, this is what's behind it. Next slide, please. Alright, so this is an illustration. It's a residential illustration. It's preliminary. It's not an announcement. But I just wanted to give you guys somewhat of a reference and an idea of where things are and where we might be going. So the last rate increase was back in July of twenty eighteen. It was a little bit more than one percent. In our current rate structure, we haven't done a rate increase since then. Some of the planned capital expenses and capital projects are already in the current rates. During twenty twenty-one, right, the total cost of service just in twenty twenty-one is partially paid from the rate stabilization. So. The rates that were done back in twenty eighteen carried the cost through in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. But during this year, we've taken a portion of the rate stabilization to fill that. Increase in the cost of service. We are going to be looking at and we'll talk about this in. In the August meeting that we might, we may end up using some of the rate stabilization funds to do some stuff in twenty twenty-two potentially. But we'll have a more formal recommendation. The key element here is that things have been pretty stable for the past several years. But remember, our load growth is starting to change and we've kind of exhausted the rates from the past. So we're due for a rate discussion, which is. What we're trying to get done and it's part of our, the general manager's goals for the year, which means it's part of our goals for the year as well. In that chart in the bottom, I just want to basically give you a general sense. The key background, again, using residential as an example, is about eight hundred and twenty KWH, two kilowatt hours that are typical. I say typical average residential home and the service territory consumes, which equates to roughly about a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty-one dollars. Just rough average. If we look at those four cost of service factors, there's the operating expense, which is that lower portion. And if we think that that increases roughly at about three percent per year, which is a reasonable assumption right now. That basically would net out to be a little bit more than a point, so. Thirteen, so thirteen mils, I guess, is my way to say it, but. It worked out to be roughly a dollar per bill each month. If you take the electrification and energy conservation fund. We currently collect one tenth of one cent, which is extremely low by all comparisons. And we're underfunding our incentive programs right now. What our recommendation most likely will be, we talked about this in the past, but probably will be a half a cent. So there might be four tenths of a. Percent of four tenths of a cent increase, which would equate to an average typical bill of about three dollars and twenty-eight cents. Again, rough numbers, it's just an illustration. Power supply, which is a pass-through, but just to give you an idea of power supply, there's upward pressure on rates. That would equate to be roughly about a dollar, almost two dollars, a dollar seventy-one per month. And then certificate requirement is again, small right now, but that's going to increase as we go up toward. The fifty percent target by twenty thirty. So the next couple of years, that would be roughly seventy-four, seventy-five cents per month. All said and done, you add those key blocks together, it's about six dollars. Is roughly is the kind of the order of magnitude of what a typical bill would go up to cover the, the programs and costs that we have in place right now. And that, again, illustratively, that's about a five percent increase. So just trying to give you guys some categories and order of magnitude and what's coming down the road. I just wanted to put the bottom here, we have two, you know, two suggestions, a renewable choice and a non-carbon choice. And a moment, I'm going to ask for some feedback on those two. And we'll have these numbers appear in those next slides, but just to kind of give you an order of magnitude. Out of that hundred and twenty-one dollar bill, that would be roughly twenty-five dollars for the renewable choice. We'll explain that in a little more detail. And the non-carbon would be about six. So that's roughly twenty-one percent and five percent respectively. So just illustration to kind of give you an idea of what's coming down the road for the August rate discussion meeting and it'll be just on rates. Next slide. So just. In, in the, this is what John Rogers was referring to, I think, earlier, simple, effective and motivating is what we're trying to think about this renewable choice. This renewable choice or choice is, we should say, and that's what we're proposing. We're looking for feedback tonight so we can make those, take that feedback. So that when we come back in August, we have something that reflects some of the desires that you guys have and the feedback you have. As we talked about before, we looked at the renewable programs, the. The certificate retirement renewable programs that the other utilities had Belmont, Wellesley, Shrewsbury, Middleborough, Totten. Wellesley, this particular one is the voluntary renewable energy program. We did talk in some previous sessions about the project oriented one. Which is a project focused on, so I just tried to do apples to apples here. And at the bottom, you can see the two proposals that we'll start talking about here in just a moment in green. You get an idea of the relative additional cost. It's pretty similar to what other people are doing. The other programs are opt-in. On the left-hand side, these are the factors that we were looking at in terms of thinking about the programs and I'll walk you through the details here in just a second. But the goal is to look at how do we communicate the programs, customer preferences, opt-in, opt-out, which will be an important feedback from you guys. Certificate count and pricing, the certificate values, so the number of certificates changed by. Season by season as the pricing. So I want to make sure that we can actually administer the program and also keep them, again, so simple, effective and motivating. Okay, next slide. So on this slide, just to keep things in mind, the goal is to offer customers a hundred percent option. Alright, so this is in addition to the twenty-three percent that all rate payers pay right now. And the reason why all rate payers pay twenty-three or contribute twenty-three percent is we're retiring. The first twenty-three percent this year, next year it'll be twenty-six percent, the next year it'll be three percent higher. But for twenty twenty-one, everybody participates, all rate payers participate in the twenty-three percent. The question is, or the opportunity is for the additional seventy-seven percent for this year. As an example, what would it look like? So we created, as we talked about before, two choices, a renewable choice and a non-carbon choice. And as John Rogers mentioned earlier, on the renewable choice, we focused exclusively on mass class one certificates. I've got a note here that we might want to make it even further refined, which was a great suggestion. But it isn't, the intention of that one is to kind of mimic to some degree the IOU, RPS, CES discussions that we had earlier. Right now, and the prices do change over time and we monitor them every week as part of our portfolio management now. But currently, mass. Massachusetts class one certificates are trading roughly around forty dollars. Right now they're on thirty-nine. To forty dollars and twenty-five cents, so somewhere in that range. The idea, so that we can manage the program and have some stability, is make it a one-year commitment. And again, if we look at that seventy-seven percent times the eight hundred and twenty KWH times the four cents. It works out to be roughly twenty-five dollars or about twenty percent of a typical bill. So that's one scenario. The other scenario is non-carbon choice, which kind of, you know, as we've talked about before. Non-carbon is kind of the new metric based on the, based on the climate bill. And that particular scenario would, would be oriented toward retiring. And again, both of these are to take those funds and retire certificates like we talked about last month. And there will be above and beyond the twenty-three percent, but basically retire. Regional class two, tier one certificates, those kind of certificates that aren't mass class one and not effects typically. In our portfolio, the average for those is about eleven dollars, eleven dollars change in the current portfolio. So that works out to be eleven dollars per certificate value on average. So that works out to be about a cent per kilowatt hour. Again, the same basic structure, we do a one-year commitment, I'm opt-in. If we, if we run the math on that, that works out to be roughly six dollars a month. Which is roughly five percent of a typical monthly budget. So I'm going to pause now for a minute. And, and any kind of questions, but also feedback on renewable versus non-carbon choice.
Mister Chair.
Yes, Phil.
Okay, let me ask my question now. One of the great things is watching the C A B, I get, I get the preview of all this. So. Couple of questions I got here. Is it possible that, you know, you say eight certificates per person per year? Could a person buy more than one?
So we, the way we thought about it was to bring them up to a hundred percent. Could we allow them to buy more? Maybe I hadn't thought about that, to be honest. So they could buy more than a hundred percent.
Solar two, which, which I, you know, subscribe.
Oh, oh, yeah.
I only bought one. I wish I bought more than one.
Yeah.
That program has worked and I'm wondering, you know, if a participant, if somebody wanted to come in, could they buy? You know, is that so they buy two?
Yeah, to answer that question, yeah, we're, we're looking at the, the, in addition to the solar choice programs. So we haven't, we haven't finalized how to allow those and if it allows it to go over a hundred percent, that's a different question that we are digesting. I thought you were asking if somebody wants to buy a hundred and ten percent just cash, could we do that, which is another interesting question.
No, I mean, you know, instead of just buying one unit, you buy actually two is what I'm kind of thinking.
Yeah.
Terms of that number. I know you mentioned in the C A B that, you know. It'd be up actually to whatever the certificates are, and then if it was beyond that, it would just, you buy on the open market to retire them. You want to address that too?
Yeah, sure. So the question that came up earlier, let's, either you do an opt-out program or you have an opt-in program that. More people subscribe to it and our intention is basically to retire certificates that we have on hand. And if it becomes wildly popular and we need sixty percent of our portfolio to have certificates to retire. So we would basically above our forty-three percent, we would have to go out to the open market and actually buy those additional certificates and then retire them. So that's one of the things we are thinking about in terms of how we would administer under that scenario. But right now, we're basically looking at, you know, with these funds from either renewable choice or the non-carbon choice, and we'll keep track of the two. But to retire the additional certificates above the twenty-three percent line for this year and obviously next year, it'd be above the twenties. Twenty-six percent line and onward and onward, so.
Can you address why we, why you've chosen opt-in as opposed to and not opt-out?
So that's, this is what we're proposing. We basically looked at what the other MLPs were doing and we wanted to basically allow this, we're looking for feedback in terms of opt-in versus opt-out. Part of the discussion on opt-in versus opt-out is a, the magnitude of the change. Obviously, in a renewable one, where you're doing all mass class ones, it's a rather significant increase, about twenty percent. Will need to do a tremendous amount of communication, if that's in fact what you asked us to do, to do an opt-out program. An opt-out program under the non-carbon, where it's a five percent increase. Might not be so controversial from a customer perspective. So we don't, we, we had this discussion two sessions ago and. There was, there was some, you know, again, there were some calls that we got afterwards asking, what are we doing? And we said it's open for discussion. If you have an opinion, you should come to our meetings, these meetings, so. We're open to, we're open to input from the commissioners and how they want us to think about this. I want to give you an idea of order of magnitude.
Yeah, last, can you go back one slide, please? Can you go back one slide here? I noticed that we seem to have a great difference between, you know, similar between Taunton versus Reddick. What, what are they doing differently that, than what we'd be doing? In terms of the cost per kilowatt?
Yeah, and. So it's the type of certificates that they are retiring and if they're funding them a hundred percent. So I don't, so my understanding right now is they're not. Funding them a hundred percent. We would basically say whatever funds would a hundred percent pay for those certificates. So I think there's some cross-subsidation going on with Taunton. I will confirm that, but that's my understanding.
Okay, very good.
What we, what we tried to do is, you know, a mass class one certificate is forty dollars a megawatt hour. You, you convert that into kilowatt hours, it's four cents. So we just might try to make it a direct one-to-one. That's what we were thinking.
Okay, I'll let others speak.
Greg. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Do you know the participation, participation, participation rates of the other towns listed here?
No, but I will, I will get that for our August discussion. That's a great question and I had it on the list and had not accomplished that yet, so I will get that.
Excuse me, Greg, one question, when you have renewable choice and non-carbon choice. What was the thought to market one versus the other? You know, would you, would you say, hey, look, if you're a solar customer and you have an EV vehicle? You're renewable. If you're, you don't have either of those items. You know, and you, and you want to contribute to the non-carbon footprint, you're, you know, you're more likely to take non-carbon choice. How were you thinking of marketing, you know, one, two versus. That, that, you know, the void is do nothing and what happens? Obviously, that's opt-in versus opt-out. But what's, what's the marketing?
Yeah, so, so the thought process right now. We didn't spend as much time focused on the renewable one. Because we knew the people, so the working assumption is those that would be focused on what a mass class one would be, would be. Would be deep into thinking about. What a mass class one was. The thought process of the non-carbon would be people that want to participate in some way. Didn't really want to get into the details, but wanted to do something and would basically say, hey, look, for another six dollars or five percent. Heck, I'll, I'll contribute to climate. I mean, however they want to characterize it. So we haven't, we haven't gone into the details of how we want to package it. But we thought that the, the non-carbon would probably get a significantly higher. Rate of participation if we did an opt-in program and we would encourage that. Because it's, it is. It's not a huge financial number. The working assumption is that a lot of the rate base. Would be, are interested and want to do something on climate, but want to check a box. So we, we've got more work to do, but the focus is more on trying to create something that would get. Adoption and that's where non-carbon came in. And then the other piece, most people know about non-carbon, that's got a lot of. Non-carbon is the new buzzword replacing renewable.
And, and was there any thought towards, okay, if you do add an EV charger or solar to your home, you'll get forced into a program. You're forced into renewable choice.
No, we haven't thought about that yet, actually. So we're, there is a time of use requirement for EV chargers, for example. If you want to, if you want to be in that program and we will, in, in the August one, we will be proposing. A more specific rate for EV charging. In terms of the time of EV charging. We, we believe now, based on the analysis we've done, that there is an opportunity to actually encourage adoption with rates. Whereas before we ran the analysis, we were a little bit suspect. So we actually think that rates could be a driver. Again, a lot of communication to be done, won't happen overnight, but rates, rates will. Rates will drive people's economic analysis, say, hey, if I'm doing a replacement of a vehicle or maybe I'm doing a new one. There's the, there's the environmental motivation, but there'd be a strong economic motivation as well. We'll talk more about that next week, but that would be, we haven't tied the two together, but we know that, well, we're going to propose. An aggressive EV related time of use.
Greg.
Yeah.
This Wellesley line, number two, the voluntary renewable energy program. Twenty, is that an older program?
That's the one that's, that's the one that's been in existence. And it's, it, it was an opt-in. The new one potentially is going to replace this one, but this was literally, they put this in similar to what we were thinking about as well.
Right, and I know the new one, you know, is definitely an opt-out and. And like, I don't know, a few weeks ago, it was out of ten thousand customers, about eighty had opted out.
Oh, nice. That's the data so far. Yeah. Yeah. A lot of people complain?
No. He didn't say it was complaints. He just said it was they just opted out. Is that what you meant?
I should direct things to the chair, but.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, let let I I it's good information to know, but I mean, we don't have a program yet, right? We'll find out if there's a brand new. Let's get them. Let's get their data and figure it out. Like, I mean, some people might not even know it's 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 even occurred. I don't know what.
No, they've been talking about it for a year. So they definitely have been broadcasting it to all their reviewers.
It came into it came into effect in July. So it's this, it's it's hitting their bills now. You're right. I'll get I'll get more participation feedback.
If I may offer my feedback on all this, Greg. It's all a great effort at the highest level, given that you already face, you're going to, like you said, you're going to face communications challenges with this. I think having two programs, one with two different names, is 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 making your job harder for yourself without really a benefit. And I don't, just looking at the numbers, it's not sure, not clear to me, why would the renewable one add twenty-one dollars on average? Why would it have to add that much while the other one only adds five dollars? That you could have different levels of participation within a renewable choice. So there could be, you know, you can do it at whatever the whatever the tranches are, five dollars, ten, twenty, like Shrewsbury. You know, why does it have to be just that large number, which twenty-one dollars feels like a lot, you know? So that would be my suggestion would be to do one program, have it start with, you can always add another one.
Yeah. Erica, would you go down one slide? So just to clarify, so maybe have them have the same name or renewable choice, but still have two, two subcat, two or three subcategories underneath it, something like that?
Correct, because like you have that you have one way to do it, and you have to you have to go in at this level where it's adding, what is it, twenty-five dollars? Like, it's the fixed amount, it's adding to everybody's bill. It's only one way to to participate. I think that's perhaps too rigid and too high of a number, and that you should give, it would be good to give people levels of participation within that, similar to what Shrewsbury did. And and my my inclination would be to start with the renewable choice one. And if you need to, then roll into a second program. But I just think keeping, you need one name, one program, just for keep it simple for yourself and and everybody else.
Well, I'll in effect have a couple, you know, two or three different categories from less expensive to more expensive. We can figure out how to how to present them underneath a renewable choice category. Is that, am I following? I think I'm following.
Yeah, and you're right, you know, and we might need to go through this one or two meeting cycles, right, to kind of look at this. I mean, it's it's a very tough problem you're you're grappling with. So.
I I think it'll be, it's very relevant in the context of the rate study that we'll be doing next time. So we'll we'll take the feedback and tune this up a bit based on the feedback. You're right, it'll probably take a couple of iterations. We have to offer something and want to give some choices, but how do we make it easy? So.
Yeah, and one last just quick numerical question is, when you say all ratepayers contribute twenty-three percent, is that a reference to what our current non-carbon power supply number is? So if anybody were asked, what is our, what is R M L D's power supply and non-carbon, the answer today is twenty-three percent, correct?
Twenty-twenty-one, right, because what what means basically, we're retiring twenty-three percent of our certificates, non-carbon certificates in this year. And that's our, that's the policy that we that you guys laid out for. Yeah. So that and then three percent next year, and it's going to fifty percent by twenty thirty.
Understood. So under the climate law, which is now in force, our levels are now twenty-three percent. That's the number, right?
Yeah, and 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 an important point, right? From a compliance perspective, we're not, we don't have to hit any, we're going to report each year, we're required to do that, but our target doesn't come into play until twenty thirty. And so.
I get that. Yeah. But in terms of this, there's a climate law, it defines how we can talk about this now, which it didn't used to. And when you follow what the climate law says, and anybody asks you, hey, Greg, what's R M L D's non-carbon power supply is twenty-three percent?
Correct, in twenty-twenty-one.
Okay. Wasn't higher than that before. It would it would have been lower than that before, but we have a law now that says how you can talk about it. Yeah, that's true. Yeah. So, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Phil.
Yeah, so just kind of packing on to what Dave said, which I think is an excellent idea, to have one program, you know, I I'd like to see maybe the renewable choice be one program. And if really you could get that fixed rate down to a, you know, where it matches the the rate on the non-carbon, I think I'd I'd actually support maybe an opt-out on this, if you can get that number down there. Because I think that's, you know, a four percent kilowatt, I'd hate to try to do that as an opt-out. Even though the statistics may indicate differently, which we're going to look into. But if you get that to a one cent, you know, per kilowatt hour, I mean, I think definitely to move it to an opt-out would would I'd be in favor of that. So my two cents, my one cent doubled.
That's interesting. Opt-out on.
I'd take John. Yeah, sure. I I can't see everybody, so I I.
No, that's okay. That's okay. I want a great great work on this. I really think it's fantastic. And I do agree that if we could sort of blend the two programs together and make it much more easily understandable by our general public in the first place, our our customers. And I think that'd be a really good thing to do. And at some point in the future, if we need to divert the two and and go into different classes, we probably could. So maybe taking baby steps first is a good idea. I have to tell you, I'm very much against an opt-out program, one hundred percent, actually. Because I don't think it helps people who don't understand the complexity, and I think it really takes advantage of people and to force them into programs and then have to get out as opposed to the general public who really wants to have this. And they can opt into it so easily. So I just want to state my position that I'm really not in favor of an opt-out program. I think it's absolutely wrong. And I think opt-in is is a great way for people to participate who want to participate. So it's just my feeling. I just wanted to state that.
Marlena, do you want to say anything?
Just until Greg gets the numbers on the opt-in programs, the percentages of the participation rates, I don't see how one could choose opt-in without knowing that.
Well, just a comment, the data that Marlena sent around in one of our previous meetings showed that obviously opt-out was a higher participation, there's no question about it, because most of the people didn't understand what they were getting into at the time. And so I would suggest that that's not an appropriate way for us to act as a municipal entity.
I I if I might add on to what John's saying, and I'm all all for and and opt-in. But I I do think there is, that's a great idea about having one program name with two tiers in it, or possibly three. So. All right, maybe we can just close this discussion and move on. I know it's in the sake of time, we get a couple more big items on the agenda. So. That agreeable to everybody?
Yep, yes.
Okay, excellent. Okay. Thank you very much, Greg. That was fantastic. Okay. If we went on to item, you know, previously item number five, the general managers' report. Colleen, please.
Thank you. Nice job, Greg. So on the annual report, it's ready for release. It contains three previously approved elements, including the high school art contest for the cover. Thanks to everyone for voting, the twenty-twenty highlights in the G M letter submitted under the G M evaluation in March of twenty-twenty-one, and the audited financial statements. The report will be uploaded to the website and distributed to the towns tomorrow. A recap of the twenty-twenty highlights and the twenty-twenty-one year-to-date progress will be made at the Redding Town meeting this fall. I usually make it in April, but we'll be doing November this year. This has changed because we moved to a calendar year budget. And there's a suggested motion for the approval as presented.
Ready for the motion, Mr. Chair?
Can we discuss anything in the report first, or should we do it during the during the motion?
What do you want? You want Bob, you want the motion discussion or what?
I I I said, let's do the motion and then and then have discussion.
Okay. Move that the board of commissioners approve the annual report for calendar year two thousand twenty as presented the recommendation to general manager.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yeah, I I do. I don't know if others do, but I guess I was wondering, you know, we just discussed what the what the non-carbon numbers are. And up up in one of the highlights, it says, it says our non-carbon numbers are twenty-five percent. And I think they're really twenty-three, but then more significantly on page seventeen, there's a full-page graphic that represents that we are at forty percent non-carbon in twenty-twenty-one, which is what the year we're in now. And it says thirty-two percent last year. But we just heard that we are now at twenty-three percent. That's been the number that's been set at a number of meetings. So I just, I don't understand the the graphic on page seventeen. It just seems to be giving very large numbers that are above what we actually have for non-carbon power supply.
Do you want to chime in, Greg? I'm just, this is a snapshot in twenty-twenty. Everybody knows that, right? This is a twenty-twenty before the climate bill. So when I tried to do this page, it was talking about what was coming down the pike, but it's technically in twenty-twenty. So this would have been similar to what we presented at the end of last, at the end of twenty-twenty.
Yeah, and I think the other piece is that this is total certificates purchased, a portion which were sold and a portion which were retired. So we didn't for twenty-twenty, we didn't segregate them, as you mentioned earlier. Now we're at a different the metric now is retirement versus sales. And we didn't, we didn't segregate those in this particular report. That's where the difference is currently. That's in terms of this graphic.
I guess I understand, but I I doesn't quite sit right, because we we do have the law in effect now, and the report's coming out, you know, now. And this is a chart in the report saying what our power supply is, and it's saying we're at forty percent non-carbon in twenty-twenty-one. So you know, I I just, I think, I I do think the chart should, this page should be replaced with one that follows what the climate law says we're allowed to say with respect to our power supply.
May I make a comment?
Yes, please, sure.
So so Dave, you're right, but twenty-twenty-one is not over. Annual reports typically are the previous year, meaning they reflect what the twenty-twenty is, not what twenty-twenty-one is, or what twenty-twenty-one will be, or even if we're halfway through twenty-twenty-one. This is a reflection, all annual reports are a reflection of the past. So if this is what it was in the past, then twenty-twenty-one's annual report will reflect the correct numbers that you're asking for.
So I take I take your point there, and you're you're quite right that annual reports are retroactive and retrospective still and all. I mean, even as it's as it's, I think we have a little bit of a different situation in that how we're allowed to talk about these numbers is now governed by a law that just passed. And you know, e- even if, you're right, twenty-twenty was not over, but twenty-twenty, it says we were at thirty percent and we weren't. So because we have a law that says how we're allowed to talk about our power supply. So we can't say in a report coming out now that we had thirty percent in twenty-twenty, we didn't. So.
Can I make a suggestion? How about, how about this? This is actually a snapshot of twenty-twenty. It's last year's, we did move to a calendar year. If we upload this to the website, we can put an updated page that says current year-to-date. But we can't really take out what happened in twenty-twenty. This is why at the bottom, under climate bill, I was very careful to write pending and not make it into twenty-twenty-one. It has to reflect last year. But we can put another page and send it along to the people who are looking at the website and to the people that we send this out to.
I mean.
Master, Mr. Chair.
Go, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yes, yes.
Sorry, I I don't know if it's appropriate for me to speak at this point.
I I think that that's a very reasonable thing to do, to say this is a reflection of twenty-twenty, and here's we are so far in twenty-twenty-one. I think that should help dispel whatever issues there are.
Yes, John, please go ahead. Rogers.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I I appreciate this conversation. I actually think in twenty-twenty, I mean, you all know what I brought to you about renewable energy credits. Any of that, so that what's the the easy thing to do would be take that solar wedge, take that wind wedge. And if we sold, if we retired any of the recs for those for twenty-twenty, then we own the right to put solar in our wind in our in our pie chart. If we didn't retire them, if we sold them all, then those at the very least need to be, you know, hatched out or something. What we really ended up with was system power. So I think this was a very real issue for twenty-twenty with or without the climate bill. And the climate bill didn't change. All it did was make sure that M L Ps were paying attention. It didn't change the nature of recs. Recs still are the rights to have it on the pie chart. If we didn't, if we wanted in the pie chart, we would have had to retire those recs. So at the very least, there needs to be some, I would suggest there have to be some, you know, asterisks or hatching or a note under the renewable in the renewable resources blurb below it that just said, R M L D sold the recs for these or whatever. Because I think it's pretty clear from what Greg said that we didn't hold on to any solar or wind recs. So we didn't have solar or wind.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, please.
So so two things. One is, I think we can make that fine-tune it if if need be. One of the things they were trying to get across with this graphic is the concept of associated recs. When we buy power, we work diligently to, we 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 I won't take we take a parish view, but we really try and buy power where we can buy the certificates with it. Obviously, we want to get the power first, non-carbon second, and then certificates third in terms of thinking about it. In this particular case, twenty-twenty, the only ones we ended up did, did, the only ones we ended up selling were solar, some solar and some wind. And so in reality, if we were to adjust this, the ones that we actually retired would probably be higher. I I gotta go back and run the numbers, but they'd be higher than they would be for twenty-twenty-one, because we're making a conscious effort now to sell up to the annualized line. We can run it, but it's going to be pretty close to this, and we can make some clarification if need be. But we still want to make sure that the audience understands A, what what we retired versus sell, good point. But B is the emphasis in terms of really buying power from renewable or non-carbon resources. Those are two different points we're trying to get across. Does that make sense?
Yes, it it does. And that's why I I think it maybe goes to a separate attachment with the new page. What was your thought there?
I I I think what I might do is is just take this chart and and make some cross, just make some some reference to what twenty-twenty was. We tried to put in that climate bill is is Colleen mentioned, we tried to give some description in the climate bill down there at the bottom, but we can make another note there. Won't change the numbers. And then we'll go back and look at the forty percent Commissioner Talbot elsewhere in the book. I forgot about that piece, but I can clean this one up just a little bit without making a major change to get the point across is my suggestion.
So after listening to all this, just a quick feedback, if I may. This this chart has a line saying what R M L D's target based on climate bill requirements is going up to fifty percent, and it implies that we're kind of already there by twenty-twenty-two. We are twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, we're already like well over fifty percent. I I just, I've heard all this, but I still have to say I find this really very misleading as to where we are, and that this chart should not appear right now because we have the law. And this this chart talks about the climate bill, and actually, it's a climate law now. It's not just a bill. And there's other language elsewhere in this annual report that refers to pending legislation. But the it's it's not pending legislation. It's it's, I I know, I I know this is a report from the past, but I I just can't vote for this this annual report. I don't based on this chart being in here with the law that we had come in. Anybody who wants to know what what R M L D's situation is, is going to look at this, and we're putting it out there as our statement of where we are, and it's just.
If I may, it's not just a statement. It's not just a statement, thank you, Bob. It's not just a statement of where we are. It's a statement of where we're trying to get to. It's projections into the future. The law wasn't passed until last, end of last year. And so, again, annual reports reflect the past. You have to take that into account, and they project where you expect to be into the future with extenuating circumstances. Every annual report of every company in the United States does exactly the same thing. So all they're trying to do is communicate to the public about where they are, where they hope to be. And if there's modifying situations, which by the way, there always are, Dave, you're absolutely right. You have to read the little notes, the little fine little notes to kind of find out what's changing or what's not changing. So I have no problem with the chart whatsoever, and next year, the chart's going to be different, hopefully. And we'll incorporate the law as it's stated to change the chart if we need to. But this is the past. We're looking backwards. I mean, I can't believe that there's a major issue with where we're trying to go. It is forward-looking, too.
Can't be both looking and a doubt, that's from November, but okay, we disagree. And I just, this is our annual report stating where we are, and this is summarizing our power supply. And it just isn't, it just isn't, was, it isn't even accurate for 2020. We didn't have 30% non-carbon in 2020, so.
Okay, so, so at, at this point, I think, I, I'm a little, until we see the revised chart, I think we should table any vote or any motion at this point till we start, till we see it again. But that delays it a month.
I think that's a good idea, Bob. I mean, and I think if, if you're going to give it a month, is this, why not have, have a little bit more explanation of, hey, there's a climate bill, climate law, and this is what our power supply looks like under the climate law, and have a second figure? Because so, so much has changed. I mean, in decades, we haven't had this kind of regulatory legal change.
Well, I, I, and again, I 100% agree with John. That's, we go by, well, at the end of 2020, we can't change the rules as you go, right? 2020, end of 2020, go forward from there. But until we can get an adjusted chart, I don't think we can, we should vote on anything.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, yes, please, Phil.
I will move that we table the motion until the August meeting, at which point the, the concerns that have been raised by Commissioner Talbot can be addressed and represented to us back at the August meeting.
Is there a second?
Somebody's got a second.
I'll second that.
Okay. Have a vote.
Mr. Seinoi?
Talbot, I.
Mr. Gold, the right.
Dave?
B to I.
Okay, votes four to one. We'll table it till the next meeting. Okay, let's go to.
Can, before we move forward, can I ask for clarification of exactly what it is? Am I able to add asterisks with notes on it? To, to further clarify? I thought I was doing that at the bottom with the climate bill. But do you want, I can make an additional page and have the breakout of 2020? And then on the next page, I can put, you know, I can put a line on this table saying, okay, going forward is the climate bill. And on the next page, call it a projection and, and put in a new graph. Is that acceptable? Just want to make sure I'm clear before we spend time fixing this.
I, I would say, do a chart like this, but that complies with what the current, what the law says we now can say with respect to our power supply. So you could, you could leave this one with some notes on it, but then have a second full page saying, what does it look like with the law in force and using the definitions of the law?
Okay.
That's what I would do, but that's just me.
Yeah, I, I, I think we just got to be very focused. We can agree to disagree about a million things. If we, I say we go two, two pages, right? And then page one, and then page, page two with additional information, so that way it all could be on there. You get two, two views. And, and I, I hope we can agree on that once, and maybe if we can circulate that course of the month, so when it comes up on the agenda, we can just approve it and move on. There's any, we can take the comments. We can, we can send that out and then during the course of the month.
Mr. Chair, I agree. I think that's a good idea.
Okay, Mr. Rogers, I saw your hand up very quickly.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's even, even simpler, and I, and I know that a lot of work has gone into production of this. I think just simple modifications to this chart, you know, just hatchings that said, look, we had solar, we sold off these REXs, this is what's left. We had wind, we sold off these REXs, this is what's left, and just a little asterisk. I don't, I don't think you need to get into the climate law. I think it's just this chart. What, what I think you want to do is set Greg up for success in 2021. Because if we had 40% in 2020, and then 23% in 21, people are going to have right-thinking folks are going to have your head. Sorry, Greg, but I think, but it's not. I mean, the point is, you sold a bunch, we sold a bunch of REXs in 2020. We're selling, we're focusing on 2021 and 23%, and then the years following. So I, I think you just want to set 2021 up with success by making 2020. And it's, again, it's not the climate law. It's what REXs are. REXs are the right to claim it. If we don't have the REXs, we can't claim it. We shouldn't claim it. Thank you.
And the law says we can't claim it now. It didn't used to say that.
It, but it was there. The law codified that. It was already there. Certainly, the Attorney General would say it was already there.
Right, we, we're going around and around. Okay, let's move on. So I think we got, we got two great ideas. All right. Good luck, Greg. Put something together. All right. Let's move on to review of Policy 19.
Actually, we still have a couple of things left on the update. The Board of Commissioners' quarterly scheduled review. Can go through these fairly quickly. At the end of our last meeting, I recommended a schedule for the agenda and include monthly, quarterly, and rotating presentations. This helps to ensure that all the items in Policy 19 are covered, Policy 30 bids, evaluations, financials, division updates, et cetera. Erica has created this guideline for the agenda to assist both the chair and the staff in preparing for these monthly meetings and presentations that we put together. This was also presented to CAB for their meetings, because a lot of, they don't carry everything that's on the board meeting, but they do carry some. And our goals are to ensure policy compliance, quality presentations, are afforded proper opportunity for discussion, consideration for new information requests, and efficiency of time. So Erica is just going to show you what we've put together here for, this is a guideline. So we work with the chair and say, okay, this is, this is what we've got up for January, and if you want to switch things around, we can. Things that are not, you know, so what will be rotated is E and O. The IRD retail side will be done quarterly, and Wendy's quarterly financials. That does not mean that in the board packet down the bottom, that we won't include as part of, not discuss, the AP payroll questions in, in finances every month. So you can see down the bottom, the colors change. So what is in green is of the ones that can be rotated will be done every month.
Okay.
Do you want to go to the, you can go to the second tab? This is what we'll be using to say what we're covering every month. And then we have an as, you know, what actually happened is the last tab, and this is what we'll be using. So I think that will keep each of the divisions on a rotation basis for the information. Power supply, though, under wholesale, under Policy 30, will be done every month. That's not one that's going to be rotated, along with bids and other things that we, we have to do every month. So any questions on that? Okay. The Mass EV IP Grant Update. I copied everybody on the changes that I submitted to the state. So we did receive a contract back. We have 30 days to get back on that. The RMLD is teamed up with Voltrac to assist us with the engineering and construction. The locations are now the Wilmington Library and Town Hall, Reading and Haven in Maine, the Train Depot, and the Reading Library. At the library, if you noticed in my email, we're still need final confirmation of the feasibility for the direct drilling between Deering Street up through the retaining wall to the above-ground parking. Chuck Indahill will be the project coordinator, and John McDonough is going to be the lead RMLD Engineering and Construction Supervisor. George Hooper is assigned for Wilmington, and Ryan Percival for Reading are the town representatives. We're very excited about this. Joyce will work on a very general press release for this week. We won't be confirming the library in Reading, but we'll, we'll discuss that that's something we're trying to nail down. And we're very excited about this. Any questions on the Mass EV IP Grant? When I went and talked to the town of Wilmington, these groups that are put together, they're going to stay intact so that they can look at other areas where electric vehicle charging stations can go in. And then we'll have Voltrac and our engineering teams go in and start assessing them as the board approves budgets, you know, because we do have one dual in the budget right now for this year for each of the four towns. We'll continue with that as we build it out. But we'll be looking at areas going forward. Trying to define exactly where these things are going to go for the grants was, was challenging. But when you're working with the towns, trying to figure out the next place to put one, there's a lot of input from towns. So I will be asking you probably in the future for the one that is in front of Christopher's, the Haven Street and Main Street, that we consider, or you consider a recommendation for me for adopting that island. Once we get the charging station in with the pad mount and everything, and we clear that area similar to how we take care of the land at the end of the street, that would be a below-the-line suggestion. But I'm not doing that now, but I'm just letting you know that I'll probably make that recommendation. Any questions on that? Karen talked briefly about the green communities. I did submit testimony and an update to the, an amendment to the bill. What we're really looking for here, what would be the best thing to happen is if we were allowed to join based on one IOU meter that's in Wilmington, and all four were able to join, that would take us away from having to work as a billing center for the Renewable Trust. But at the end of the day, even if they don't decide to do that, at least each of the four towns will be able to progress at their own pace as they work to adopt green communities criteria. So as soon as I hear something back from the legislation, I will let you know. And then just some quick updates. We just attended the Wilmington Farmers Market. We're holding these events and talking about all the things that the survey said about our programs to make sure we get more information out there. We held electrification webinar June 7th in partnership with the libraries for four towns. It's actually on the website, and it was on RCTV in the four TV stations for each of the towns. Upcoming events, Reading Library Vehicle Day. I just sent you out a press release on that. The Reading Fall Street Fair and the North Reading Town Day. We'll be there talking about all of our programs. We have Public Power Week Open House coming up on October 7th with a rain date of the 14th. It's, it's a pretty interesting concept. I did mention to the CAB, we might be looking at some remote-controlled cars, like plug-in electric cars that the kids can do. Maybe build some little poles and they can drive them around it. This thing where we lift kids up and put them in the bucket for bucket truck rides might not be, we might not be there yet with, just coming out of a pandemic. Putting on the rubber gloves, the kids try to put the bolt onto the, so things like that, there's too much touching. So we're trying to come up with some things that will really get the kids there, because that's who brings the families in. And it's really the parents that take a look at all of our, our programs and, and technical layouts. So we are working on that. So far, so good with the Board of Health on being able to run that. The Electric Car Show, August 15th, between 10 and 1 at the Wilmington Farmers Market. We sent something out on that. There'll be a combination of dealers there and private owners. And then there's heat pump workshop that I mentioned at the last meeting. We're still trying to get that date in the fall for workshop number two. That's it. Thank you.
Excellent. It's all about the trucks, by the way, with the kids. Just FYI. It's all about the trucks. It's all about the trucks.
I know, it's.
You know, you know, I gotta get in the truck. I gotta touch the truck, touch a truck, right? But, okay.
Might be able to let them climb on them, but lifting it up in the bucket, even if you use the telecommunications ones, it's got the door on it, you'd be able to open the door from the inside. So we don't want any. We don't want anybody getting hurt, so. If anybody comes up with a good idea, though, we do have tech tip awards. Let me know if you think of something that would. I think the radio, remote-control cars are going to be great, so we'll start there. Good with that? We can jump into Policy 19. Now we've gone through this one for several meetings. So I'm not sure if we just want to ask if there's any comments and do it that way.
I think that is.
I do have some, but whenever.
I have some, too.
Okay.
You go first. Want me to go first, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please, Phil.
I got one item in, it's in section four, which is board positions and duties. You, this, this has now made me illegal. Well, you've got the vice chair cannot be the secretary, so I, you've just made me illegal here. Even though I feel good.
So you want the vice chair to be able to be the secretary?
Yes. So I suggest.
Okay, and then on item B, under the board secretary and the chair, if the vice chair is not present.
Yeah, I mean, the secretary will step up. I mean, in the old days, sound like, sound like I'm ancient, I am. We only had two, we only had two offices. We had, we had, we had a chair and a secretary. That was it. When I first got on the board. That's all we had, just two, two. We added a vice chair at some point. I have no, no problem with the secretary, or you can be, you can even say the ranking member, I guess, the, you know, the most senior member, if they want to step up. If there's a, if both the chair and the secretary are not available. You could state that it could be the most senior member at that point as a pro 10.
Wouldn't you have a problem with quorum then, though, Phil?
Well, no, if, if two people are absent, there's still three people there. That, that would be, that would make a quorum.
Yeah, okay.
All right, if three, if three of us are not there, then we don't have a quorum.
Right.
Okay. The other one in that section two is, and it's one that I've always advocated, is, you know, I've always thought a maximum two-year term. Something I've advocated over the years for many times. You know, I always felt that, you know, you get one-year term, you get your feet under you, and then after a year, you're gone. So I've always kind of advocated for some sort of two-year term, a maximum two-year term in terms of that. And it doesn't have to be, which is maximum, doesn't have to be two years. We can always change it every year. But I always kind of thought, you know, to have a two-year term is a maximum there.
Can I make a comment on that, Phil, while we're there?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. Or Mr. Chair, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, go ahead, John. Open discussion.
Yeah, I, I think that I really like the one-year. I mean, I think that a lot of things happen in one year that are either viewed as good, or viewed as bad, or controversial, or non-controversial, especially having gone through it this last year. So I think that having a one-year term is a very beneficial type of thing. It gives new blood. It brings different people in, and it rotates people. And I think it's a, it's a wonderful thing to have the rotation of different individuals with different focuses. So that's just my opinion.
You know, with the three-year term, a two-year position and a three-year term, you know, you, you're, you might never get a chance to do anything, right? So with the year rotation, there's a little bit more of a opportunity.
I tend to agree with what John just said.
That's fine. I just bring the topic up, you know? It's my personal feeling. I'm not offended.
No, no, I mean, and if, I mean, I, I don't, you know, what's to say if someone No, no, I, I mean, and if, I, I mean, I, I don't, you know, what's to say if someone didn't, you know, the board voted you in, Phil, right? Or, or voted somebody in for a second. Does, does that eliminate that?
What, what do you mean? Explain that.
Like, let, so, so let's just say, someone wanted to, to, to repeat the chair and everybody was okay. Is this, are we forcing a rotation with this or?
I, I think we are. I think we are.
Okay.
Yeah. And I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so.
Next.
So how are we leaving this one? Just the way it is?
Yes, the way it is.
Okay.
Just leave it.
So leave the terms. Am I making any edits to here? A secretary who is not the chair or vice chair?
Yes, we're, we're moving the word vice chair. The secretary who is not the chair.
And then if the chair is unable to attend here?
Yeah. I mean, I would do that. I would do that. Well, no, you can leave that in actually. We're both not there. I guess, yeah, I guess you gotta take that out too. Well, you know, let, let's do this. If the chair is not present, the vice chair would, would then step up. And you need to add in the words after that. Should both of them not be there, then the secretary would step up at that point. Because it's not always going to be, I'm not always going to be the secretary. You know?
Okay, but you are the secretary now. So if you're not there and you're the vice chair, do you want it to say that the most senior person? What do you want?
The most senior person in that case.
Senior is defined as length on the board or what?
Yes, yes. Term on the.
Not our, not her real age.
Speak for yourself.
Okay.
Ready? I have, I have a couple of questions on this.
Go ahead, John. Dave, please.
Thank you, Bob. So by the way, I don't, I don't think we have gone through this section by section. It was, it was on, but we didn't actually go through it. I think in, there, there's new language about, very severe language about like email, which is good, right, right up top, the second set of edits there.
What section are you on?
It's in section three. Now, obviously we have the law we have to follow. I, I don't know that we have to spell out what the law says in this because other than saying we have to follow state law, which of course we do. This language seems to feel, say, we can't even, I can't even, or none of us can even email, hey, everybody, here's a document to the group. I thought we could at least do that. Like, here's a document. Perhaps we can talk about this at the next meeting, that, that we could do that. But this language seems to say we can't even do that. So I know we can't say an opinion on it or whatever, but that we, like we had a conversation which was sensible a few minutes ago. Hey, let's send around possible new figure. So we can look at it before the meeting saves time. But can we even do that?
Well, I, I think it's because it's, it's discussing, it, it's a continuation of what is considered a deliberation. So if you want me to clarify that, the, the point of putting that in is I get a lot of questions from commissioners over, since I've been here in eight years, not understanding that the general manager is not, it, it, open meeting law does not apply to me. It applies to the public body. And so the second part was to clarify that and the first part was to try to clarify sending out the emails and deliberation. But it really goes back to the previous sentence. Where it says, the board, no quorum of the board may engage in any deliberation or otherwise. And then the next sentence, this restriction includes serial communications. And then it clarifies with the serial communications.
Yeah, okay. I mean, we can leave it. I just, it seemed to me like it wasn't necessary because we have a state law. And if anybody wants to know, hey, hey, look at the state law, there's, Secretary of State has a whole.
Well, there's a lot of state laws that are in our policies, which is why we're spending so much time going through them and updating them to meet the laws. That's, and I think what we're trying to do is pull out the pieces of the law so that they're here and they're easily accessible.
Okay. It, it's fine. It just seemed like we could just say you have to follow state law.
I, I, if I may, I agree with Dave. I, I think it's, I think it's very instructional. We've got articles that we want to share with people. Typically in the past have put on not for deliberation, you know, in the email, basically it just.
Correct.
Verses are educational purposes only. And whether that's from the Wall Street Journal or it's from, you know, whatever educational thing.
Right.
Just kind of sharing with each other. And I, I think there's nothing wrong with that. As a matter of fact, I think it's absolutely a great thing that we share things with each other as opposed to having to bring them up and just in a meeting where no one has any time to even look at them.
Agreed.
This doesn't prevent that. I, I think, again, I think this is nothing more than I can clarify it. But this is just talking about
Okay.
deliberation.
Okay, yeah, we, we, we can move on. We don't need to keep going on that one. I just, and by the way, when we send documents, we can do that, but we, we're not allowed to even offer an opinion on them or say, hey, I think this is, this is.
Right.
You, you can only send the document, then say.
Can't reply back.
And you can't, and you can't even in your email, offer an opinion on the documents.
Correct.
That's so. All right. Now, the only, this is one that I had asked about before, this new language, you know, and I know we changed the performance process. But again, this one seems so, it only seems to allow us to evaluate based on the, the handful of goals and not anything else. And then Colleen, you came back and said, well, but I have my contract and so, but it seems to still say, you know, okay, we set six or eight goals with you agreeing and that those are the only things we can evaluate the manager on. And it just seemed like it, it's, has us in such a tight little box there.
Section are you under? Sorry.
I'm sorry, C. And if none of the other commissioners see that, then I'll stand down. It just seems like this.
It says, the board will give the general manager a performance appraisal based on the general manager performance and satisfaction of goals and tasks agreed upon.
Okay. All right. Nevermind. I didn't.
It's, I mean, I've been here eight years. You guys have done an evaluation on everything that I've done. So I'm not really sure.
Okay, never mind. I, yeah, okay, fine. I just wanted to ask. So, yeah, so in, yes, it's in, in section F, yes, it's true that a chair can, it's totally at the discretion of a chair whether to allow public comment, how much, not at all. So I, I don't think we need to add language because this, it just seems just sort of draconian, like I'm, I will cancel public comment or, you know, the interest of time is like, yeah, of course you can do that, but why, why are we adding it? It seems, seems to put an ominous flavor on what we do and the, the, I think the effort should be to allow public, you know, we meet once a month. It's, the meetings aren't that long.
Okay, make a comment, please? In general, Dave, I, I agree with you completely. I think I am totally open to public comment. Prior to you being on the board, we had people coming in screaming and shouting and demanding that, who are we? I mean, who are these commissioners and what do they know about anything? And you know, at some point, you've just got to stand up and say, I'm sorry, but you have to relieve the chair. You can no longer comment here. So I think having it as an explicit
John.
thing, it's a really good thing to do.
Yeah. You, you're quite right. We, we can, we can limit and even prevent it. There's nothing stopping that. I just don't think we need language saying it, but.
Can I, I, I have to, I have to add that some of these things that I'm adding is because I have gotten so many comments over the years, asking the same questions over and over and over again. So this is, some of these are to clarify new commissioners that are coming in that don't understand. I don't want to point them to an open meeting law book. I just want to be able to, to, to put it in here. So it's easy for the commissioners to come in and read this and know what they can do and what they can't do. It's certainly not written to try to limit.
Okay, that's a good, now that you say that, okay, that makes sense to me. So the only other thing I, I had was, was, there was a place where it said that you will, and I know we've kind of fallen out of doing this, but that you will report to us quarterly on outside expenditures.
Right. That's, that's what Erica just went over.
And it got changed to May if requested. I guess that's okay, but it seems like we're going, we're going away from requiring the reporting instead of just leaving the requirement in there and, and starting to enforce it.
Well, let me tell you the reason why I put in there. You know, requiring it or may ask me or direct me. We have had such a full agenda for the last year and a half. You know, sticking everything in there. This is exactly why at the end of the last meeting, I said I would put together a schedule that Erica, you know, shared. It's intended to take policy 19 and every single thing, whether, whether you're asking me or not, I'm going to do that on the quarterly basis in accordance with, in accordance with that calendar. So the word may is put in there more because I, I don't want to go a whole year and we just physically don't have enough time to do some of these things or the chair takes it off the agenda and then I'm not in, I'm not in compliance. So if you look at the schedule we put together, everything's on there and that's what we're committing to follow, to follow every month. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it, it does.
Well, it, it actually said may direct. Yeah. So.
I think, I think that's all I had. I'm, thank you for that because I, some of these things I didn't understand. I don't think we actually did discuss this, like have this discussion before. So it is the policies governing how we do our thing. So thank you for tolerating the 10 minutes here, whatever it's been.
Can we go back to F again, like what Dave was mentioning?
Sure.
Can we add the word after the first sentence? We add, the chair expects all comments to be respectful and appropriate. Can we add that as a second sentence?
Can you repeat that one more time?
The chair expects all comments to be respectful and appropriate. I think that kind of, kind of softens it a little bit.
Okay.
It says, you know, if it's not, then the chair can step in at that point.
Okay. So can we do like we did the last time with the policy? If I make these changes, we can vote on it now?
Yeah.
Yes.
And, and next month, because go, you know, updating the policies for legal and whatever are every month. So I will circulate the table for September, right? Because August, we're just going to look at rates and then we'll get to the next one.
Okay. You want to motion, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please Phil.
Okay. Move that the Board of Commissioners approve policy 19. Order Commissioners as edited and presented on the recommendation of the general manager.
Second.
Let's please vote.
Mr. Pacino, I.
Mr. Steppeck, I. Mr. Talbot, I.
Mr. Caldera.
Peter, I.
All right. I think five to zero. Excellent. We got through something. All right. Good job. Good job, everybody. All right.
Leadership, Bob. Leadership.
Actually, hey, listen.
Nice work.
I, I, I'm, I'm not a yeller. I'm a, I'm a, I'm a pacifist. So, okay. All right. Let's go to item number eight. Procurement requests requiring board approval, please. Mr. John McDonough.
Yes. Good evening, everyone.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I moved the motion. Move the proposal IFP 2021-15 for one parents, number one, closed parent, materials handle the truck would trade in be awarded to James A. Kylie Company for $284,049 pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 164, Paragraph 20, 50, Paragraph 56D on the recommendation general manager.
Second.
Okay.
Just have a vote, please.
Again, explanation?
Was there discussion?
A discussion?
Absolutely. I can, I can give some stuff on this for you guys. I, I know we're up against the clock here and I want to be respectful of everyone's time. So, but just to give a, a high level overview of the, the proposal, this proposal for this vehicle, this material handle of bucket was sent out to 18 companies. We received three responses, one from Altech Industries, one from James Kylie and one from Taylor and Lloyd. Of those 18 companies who received the proposal package, there was one online resource company that would, that would align this type of bid with other nationwide vendors as they were registered to align with this and get automatically notified. The proposal was also advertised in the Middlesex Daily Times Chronicle that reaches approximately 11 local communities and RMLD website. The lowest bidder was in fact Altech with a bid of $262,000. The only issue with that is they took many exceptions. And even more alarming was the delivery time of almost two years for that piece of equipment. The second lowest bidder was in fact James Kylie, who came in at $284,000. Took three minor exceptions and their delivery time was 47 to 52 weeks, so right about a year on that one. I do want to discuss a little bit about the, the bid and the process that we followed in order to achieve this goal here. So RMLD follows our own electrification operating procedure, which does follow and aligns with Mass D O E Rs electrification guidelines. And some of the technical specs that we had built into this piece of equipment was for a separate pricing section for an electric PTO or power takeoff. I, I'll, I'll just be referring to that as an EPTO going forward. Once we got all the proposals in hand and the responses that we received, obviously we analyzed them with our materials management and also our facilities to make sure all the proposed items were met and the technical specifications were there as well. And just a, just a side note, as has been mentioned before in the past, when we send this bid packet out, we do have a form attached to this bid. So that any vendor who receives it, where we ask them to fill it out if they're going to be a non-bid, if they're not going to participate in it, just so we can better understand who is more suited and, you know, who we should be expecting bids from. So, you know, we do send that out. Most companies don't actually return that. We do ask them to, but most don't. So in the case that we don't get a response, we'll, we'll follow up with a phone call asking why or, you know, what prevented them from participating in, in this bid. And RMLD also revised its fleet modification electrification assessment form to identify some of the best available options in electrification technology. So, you know, going forward, this form gets filled out before, you know, we, we get a, a tech spec written and put on the street. We, going forward, that's how it's going to be. This last time, we actually filled it out thereafter. So what we were looking to do here is we were looking for some technology on some of these larger heavy-duty trucks that we could get electrification in them. And one of the options is in, is in EPTO. And the EPTO system, you know, does have some interesting benefits such as reduced emissions, reduced noise, improved fuel efficiency. The only downside to it really is its upfront cost. It's, you know, that, that was an upgrade kit of $83,000 for that, just for that one item. This is, this system that they specked out is the newest generation of the EPTO. Well, it's what they refer to as Gen 3. It's new to the market. It's, it's new to the utility world. Again, one of the issues with this thing here, since it's brand new, we don't have a whole lot of available data to go along with it. We had asked the manufacturer Kylie, James Kylie, you know, what type of orders have they received for the generation 3 EPTO? And as of a month ago, they didn't have any orders. No one has ordered it and there are no pending orders either. It does generate a significant discussion amongst the utility companies, but there are no municipal light plants in our area that have ordered one or that, that own a, a generation three. It is still a sizable unit. It weighs about 500 pounds. It's expensive to maintain. The average life for an RMLD asset like this is about 10. Um, it's expensive to maintain, uh, the, uh, average life for an RMLD asset like this is about ten years. The problem with the generation three is that its batteries don't have a, a ten-year lifespan. They typically have like a six or seven year lifespan. So we'd have to replace the batteries in that EPTO before the lifespan of the truck was, was up. So we had a, you know, we had a, a few, you know, concerns going forward with it. We also looked into some type of state grant that would help us, uh, afford this type of system. Unfortunately, uh, the state does not offer any type of grant or program that would fit this category. Those grants and programs, uh, are designed for drivetrain, um, electrification, not a, uh, not an accessory, not an accessory to the truck. Um, but we do keep an eye on that, uh, to make sure that if and when they do become available, we can take advantage of that. And secondly, uh, you know, we're always keeping an eye on the technology to see how it's going to, uh, advance in the future. So the, you know, next vehicle we go looking at, obviously, we're, we're looking for electrification on this one. Uh, fin- finally, the recommendation in, uh, is given the initial cost of the EPTO, about eighty-three thousand dollars, uh, in the cost recovery. We, we would not, we'd not be able to recover, I think, on a fuel savings estimate. Probably talking thirty-six thousand dollars over the lifespan of the truck, uh, so we'd never get that. And then we have, you know, the unavailability of supporting data and then the reliability and maintenance of this new technology and the added waste. Uh, we, uh, we decided it, uh, it wasn't time, it wasn't time for this, but we will continue to uh, evaluate cost and carbon savings as electrification technology advances. And that holds true for all RMLD, uh, fleet vehicles moving forward. That's, that's what we'll be doing with those and keeping an eye on the EPTO technology as well.
Can I add to that real quick? Bob?
Yes, please.
So, um, John didn't mention it and I, I know he described it well, but so this is really that it's operating on a battery when it's in place at a job description and it's, and it's idling. That's what the EPTO does. Um, I do want to mention though that, you know, forever, we've done cost analysis, uh, and I know that now with, um, as technology comes forward, it might not be, okay, there's a rate of, there's a return on investment for five to seven years. How do you calculate that for green going forward? So in this particular issue, we took a look at, um, carbon in a weight in pounds. What is it traded at in the European market? So if you take a gallon of gas and what that equates into a pound of carbon, is that a way that we can justify this instead of just the, the old fashioned engineering economics, which is like five to seven years? We also looked at the amount of carbon that we save during peak shredding and to see if we could make it equate that way. So we will continue to develop formulas for whether or not something that gets added in the future is going to be worthwhile. And we'll try to be very creative and trying to explain that because they do understand that, um, you know, people want these things and they don't put as much effort or not effort, but value into the old fashioned cost savings. So, um, just so you know how we're going to be handling this going forward, because I think there's going to be a lot of technology that's going to come out. It's going to be really nice and it's going to save a lot of emissions, but it's going to cost a lot of money. And we're going to have to kind of agree on how we're going to do that calculation. So I just gave you a couple that we, we did on this last one. Thank you.
And any input from the commissioners? Okay, I, I, a couple of quick questions. Um, what's the lift impact versus hydraulic? Is there any change? You'll get, you know, now we're running the, the system with an electric system versus a gas powered. Now, is there any lift impact?
No.
Because of that?
No, there's not. We actually had Kylie come in and demonstrate this floor so we could see it firsthand. And, uh, the, the physical operation of the truck does not change.
And then secondly, is there a temperature profile on that to keep the battery heated in order to keep them, to keep it stable and to keep it operational, cold temps or, or hot temps?
Yeah, it, it does have a, it does have a heater inside of its enclosure because obviously the characteristics of that battery will change, uh, in, in temperatures, more so cold than, than heat.
Okay. Good. I'm just, I, I, I'm sure you guys did absolute due diligence on it. Just, you know, the one thing that you don't want to see is it, is it not, not have the oomph and cold temps that you need to have, right?
Yeah, it's, it's a slick unit. It's really nice. It's really nice. But there's just too, too many unknowns with it.
Okay. All right. So no further questions? Put to a vote.
Okay. Ms. Pacino, aye?
Talbot, aye?
Beta, aye?
Mr. Caldera, aye? John, can't hear you. I can't see you, but I can hear you.
John's on mute.
Sorry, Mr. Stemp, Mr. Stempak, aye?
Excellent. Okay, we pass five zero. Um, okay, on to scheduling. What's the next date? Erica?
So right now, we are looking for the August meeting on August twelfth and we will just be focusing on rates and approving some meeting minutes. Um, I believe, I'm not positive, but this meeting will be a combined cab and board meeting.
What, what time? You want to do a six thirty start or we want to do a seven thirty start?
Six thirty.
Just as a reminder, in accordance with the twenty-year agreement, the cab will get, gets up to thirty days to review the rates when they're presented. So we're just trying to combine the presentation.
The twelfth is fine with me. I have no problem with the twelfth. Unless I get stuck in San Diego.
The twelfth work for everyone else?
Yeah, I, well, um, I prefer it to be a little bit earlier in the week, like on a Tuesday, but I can try to make it work on the, on the twelfth.
I think the cab actually had a, had an alternative date they suggested too, didn't they? I believe they suggested the ninth.
Yep, they were looking at the ninth as well.
If we can. Back up, as a backup date.
Ninth is a Monday.
Yeah.
Let's see, the ninth. August ninth?
Yep.
August ninth.
Yeah, that's, that's fine for me.
I think, I think George said he was only Hooper, but we don't have to do a combined, but.
Yeah. I, I can, I can do the two, I can't do the Monday. I can do the Tuesday. I can do the tenth. I can't do the ninth.
I can do the tenth.
Any day that week is fine with me.
I don't know if scheduling on R and works on the tenth. So it's either.
Why don't we send out a, you want to send out a doodle poll?
I'll send out a doodle poll. Put a couple of dates in there and then we can make a decision.
Okay, great. All right, and the next cab meeting coverage, August, Mr. Talbot? You're, you're getting, um, stool, so.
I, uh, feel honored that you've selected me for this.
All right. And then September's Phil and then October is John.
I think, uh, John is September. Didn't we swap?
That's right. I think I switched with you, didn't I, Phil?
Yeah, because I took tonight. So John, John will get September.
Okay, so we'll switch.
And then October would be, um, Marlena or myself?
I can do it.
Okay.
If it's online, I probably will attend it anyway to be quite truthful. So gives you a preview of everything.
Okay. All right. Okay, I, uh, item ten, executive session.
Phil for the motion?
Yes, please.
Moving to the Board of Commissioners, go into executive session pursuant to Mass General Laws, chapter one sixty-four, section forty-seven D exemption from public records and open meeting requirements in certain, in instances to discuss competibly sensitive issues regarding union negotiations and to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of, of real property and to return to regular session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
Second.
All right.
Ms. Pacino, aye?
Mr. Stempak, aye?
Beta, aye?
Mr. Caldera, aye? All right. So adjourned.
Thank you.
Okay, go.
Thanks, John Wendy.
All right. Yes, thank you very much, everybody.